Five oh two, we're calling this meeting to order. Thank you. If we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have four persons plus a fifth maybe, but the first is Jacob Lord.
Where do I stand in this?
You can stand at the podium.
At the podium, they say.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Say anything I can say on the computer.
Don't be messing around up there.
Hey, I'm Jacob Lord, I'm representing our union here, I speak library workers united. So I'm, we're all very grateful to you for deciding to get a new market consultant after finding out that the last consultant was comparing us to non-library jobs such as nonprofits. So our paid real terms has declined over the past few years and comparisons to equivalent positions at Denver Public Library also show that there is room for improvement here. This is all comparing starting pay for these jobs. So library associates make sixteen eighty-three and library program associates, the equivalent, make twenty-two seventy-six. That's a difference of five dollars and ninety-three cents every hour. Senior associates are making four dollars and ninety-one cents less. Denver Public Library assistant to ours, we made three dollars eighty-one cents less hourly. Shovers and library aides are making three twenty-nine less. Senior library assistants are making four sixty-four less. So let's look at salary. With librarians, starting librarians here make a little bit over forty-seven K. Denver Public Librarians make fifty-five K. So the difference, the real difference is seven thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars a year, but they are making less. Beginning library positions, they don't have beginning library experience. That's a position we have here, but if you compare that to their lowest grade library position, they're making over twelve thousand dollars less yearly in salary. The lowest Denver Public Library manager's starting pay is over eighty-nine thousand dollars. The highest paid rate PPLD manager's starting pay is sixty thousand three hundred twenty dollars. That is a difference of over twenty-eight thousand dollars for managers that they are missing out on. Supervisors, it's seventy K to fifty-three K, that's over seventeen thousand dollars. So lastly, the library director positions at DPL, which is the equivalent to our COO, our CFO and deputy chief librarian, are pretty equivalent. DPL makes nearly a hundred and four K, ours make one thousand dollars less, one thousand ninety-seven dollars less. So percentage wise, our highest to their lowest starting pay for managers is thirty-eight point seven five percent less pay for our PPLD managers. The lowest difference is directors make about one percent less. One minute. Our managers are making twenty-eight thousand dollars less yearly than DPL and directors are making only one thousand less. So there is a four percent difference in cost of living. We are cheaper by four percent. Adjusted for the cheaper cost of living, our chiefs are actually making two point eight six more than DPLs, which means the only position receiving higher pay in real terms than equivalent Denver library jobs are our chiefs. So nearly every library worker in this room is underpaid and you deserve more. Every manager, supervisor, librarian and below can join our union according to Colorado Labor Law as it stands. We have a new market study consultant shortly after we made a fuss about it last month. And that's just a small example of the power in unions. So thank you for reconsidering this consultant and hoping, we're hoping that the market study gives us a bit more pay. So appreciate that and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jacob.
Maureen Bridges.
Best to go.
It's fine either way, if you're up there, please talk into the microphone if you can be able to like.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. I have a letter from our board of trustees, or our board, I'm sorry, HOA board. So we're writing to the dear PPLD Board of Trustees. The Golden Hills HOA Board of Directors wishes to convey our strong desire to keep our not, our library open. We understand that a final decision regarding the closure of Rock Remen has not yet been made. However, both our board and residents would feel disheartened to see these doors permanently closed. Rock Remen Library has become Golden Hills HOA community hub for discussing important matters and fostering unity. Your staff has consistently provided exceptional service, ensuring that our equipment is available for successful HOA meetings. Many of our residents choose this neighborhood for, or have chosen this neighborhood for the convenience of having a local library. We value the opportunity to walk to the library and pick up groceries after borrowing a book. Our children are also dedicated library patrons. The library serves. We have some cards that our children have gone ahead and made for you, we'd like to give to you. So our children, the library serves an essential gateway to the wider world for our young ones. They enjoy participating in the Pulse Read Program and various other reading initiatives. Furthermore, it offers precious opportunity for caregivers and grandparents to share evenings filled with reading and new discoveries with the children. Our older children appreciate walking to the library with their friends. It grants them the freedom to socialize, complete homework and engage in a variety of exciting classes and workshops. Most importantly, it provides a safe place for them, a safe place for them to connect and study. In summary, the Rock Remen Library serves as the cornerstone of our community. We would be thankful for any guidance on how our homeowners association can contribute to the library's ongoing operation. For any help you may require, please contact our president, Rob Hicks, and I have a phone number. Please refer to the attached page of our resident and HOA board signatures. Thank you, the Golden Hills HOA Board of Directors and residents. And I have with me, I have signatures of sixty-one people. So I will give that to you. And also, we have the children made cards for you and just explaining how important the library is for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Judy Moral.
So, thank you very much for serving on our library board. I know it's not always easy. And thank you for your time today. I have a few points to make concerning the Rock Remen Library branch. First, when the outside consulting group presented their preliminary findings to you in June, they said that they had communicated with thousands of people about current operations and community needs. I'm afraid that they somehow missed a large cross-section of people on the northwest part of Colorado Springs. I have talked with many community members in the area, not one of them has said that they were consulted about any changes and none of them want the library closed for the week. But there is still time, since the final report has not been presented. I am happy to give my contact information to any representatives of the consulting group so that I can give them information on groups that they could contact. I'm sure that others in the audience could do the same. Additionally, the consulting group said that too many of the library branches are on the west side of town. The Rock Remen Branch is a sweet spot on the northwest side of town, serving a large population as for Mountain Shadows, Rock Remen, Pine Cliff, Garden, Woodstone, Woodton Valley, Thunderbird, Pine Creek and others. We are nowhere near the far west branches in New Pass, Annapheu and Old Fall River. Library twenty-one C is the closest, but it is large and doesn't give the community the feeling that the Rock Remen Branch does. I'm sure there would be much less library use from our patrons if that was the main choice we had. Next, as I understand it, PPLD owns nine of its sixteen facilities and leases or rents seven. So why close Rock Remen out of those seven when it's one of the busiest in the city? I realize that it is expensive to rent or lease facilities, but it is also expensive to maintain your facilities. PPLD has spent a lot on the Penrose Library and from the twenty twenty-four budget, it looks like it is spending seven hundred thousand. Okay, one of these branch parking lot, two hundred and twenty on modernizing the elevator and three hundred on other improvements. With both types of facilities are expensive. With leased properties, the library shares those costs with the owner. Finally, I hope the board can allocate funds to keep Rock Remen open in the northwest part of town. It's an important part of our community and it is easily accessible to us. Additionally, we can do fundraising to pay for a new building. We can find a building in our area that's more affordable. We can ask for a middle level increase or remove the taper restrictions from the library district. And in the spirit of dignity, we can seek funding from philanthropies like El Pomar or the Leida Hill Philanthropies. Let's work together to keep Rock Remen Library open. Thank you.
Janet Nolan. I use, if you don't, you don't have to go, just sign up as a guest. Oh, I see, just so they could hear you, you don't have to go to the black turn, but you can get nearby. Or I can carry the microphone over to you, would that be better for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay.
I'll fill Donna Hewitt for you. Go fast away. Just get as close to your mouth. I won't go until he's up.
Okay, I'm talking.
Are you all here?
Yeah. All right. I want to agree with these other people, I've been speaking about Rock Remen. I've been volunteering there for almost ten years. It has literally been my happy place until recently when all of these difficulties have happened. I don't know what the answer is, I don't know why, in my opinion, it's being targeted. I don't understand that at all, when all this money, as you said, is going into Penrose. Why are they complaining? We're not asking for any money at Rock Remen. So I don't understand why just Rock Remen. And I've been told that all the libraries are supposed to offer the same things so that they're people. Well, there's no way all of our libraries can do that. They're all different, they have different things. Only a few of them have a three D printer. It's not equal. So I don't understand the concept at all. I'm with the friends and we're allowed to use our money for the staff, but not pending for the patrons, for the children or anything else in order and just the staff. And I don't understand how that is something we should have to do. I don't understand that concept, it's brand new. It's never been there before, the ten years I've been there, and it's something that they've just instituted. So anyway, I don't understand it. So hopefully, we can keep Rock Remen, it was a wonderful place and hopefully it will get back to wonderful.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, others, right now, pleasure.
I'll stand, it's okay. The only thing is, no, no pleasure. And I'm a patron of the Rock Remen Library. And mine is going to be short and sweet, but I've lived here for sixteen years. One of the first things I did when I moved here was find a library. And I was thrilled when I found one really close to where I live. So it's, it's been one of my main states for years. I'm also a member of the friends now and I've been working with them for several years. Like, you know, working friends do. And I've done a lot of different activities in the library, including yoga classes, craft classes, book clubs, a lot of different things. I, I was really disturbed when I first heard that there was a possibility that our branch library not close. So I think it would be a huge detriment to the area and I just hope that somehow we can at least find another place to have our library or that we'll just continue where we are. Because like all the other people I've said that have spoken before me, a lot of money is being spent on other libraries, especially Penrose Library from the upcoming projects that I've heard now already. So I'd just like to say thank you for giving me the chance to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Stephen, but I could not make out the last name, I apologize.
It's Enabli, Stephen Enabli. Sorry about that. I think I've signed them. Thank you.
I'd like to say I'm a little intimidated by being up here in front of all you folks. Madam President, members of the board. I, I wrote a letter to the board, directly to Madam President, to you, email in the spring. Was also addressed to members of the board concerning the homeless situation in downtown Colorado Springs and the libraries. I don't know what the word is, attempt to cater to the homeless. I'm seeing, it's interesting that I came to this meeting tonight because it appears that we're closing down branches because we're spending so much money here. And I don't believe you get rid of a problem by catering to it. You spend a lot of money for lockers which are not being used here. I don't bring my home with me in a, in a stolen shopping cart when I come to the library. I bring my library card. You put chargers in for cell phones. I heard that was at all the branches, but I guess you have to treat everybody equally. I charge my phone at home or I charge it in an outlet. I don't have an, homeless people don't have outlets in their tents, so they can't charge their cellphone. And I've been here twice and there's been vendors outside giving away free cell phones to the homeless. I am compassionate to those people, I feel bad for those people. I have a friend who was a homeless person, living in California, had a job, was on social security and still was living in her car because she couldn't afford the housing there. I heard yesterday, or it wasn't yesterday, but last week, that you were still planning on putting lockers outside for people to put their stuff. And I won't say, I won't say that you directed directly to the homeless, but once again, patrons don't bring their, bring their home with them. I'm sorry.
You have one minute left.
Okay. I also heard that you're planning on putting a fence up. It seems rather foolish to invite people to come here and then put up a fence to keep them out. We don't need to have a fort here in Colorado Springs to keep out undesirable people. I hope the board will use a little common sense on this, not close down these other branches and save some of the money that you plan to spend here on something that's not for everybody, that is directed basically to one segment of our community and a segment which doesn't really contribute anything. Thank you for your time and like I said, I hope you'll use some common sense.
Thank you.
We have one online that does let me know, Kathleen Walker, you can unmute and give your comment.
He's on mute.
Okay.
Kathleen, if you can unmute, please.
All right, I'll speak now. It, I realize you. One second, turn that off. I realize you started in a time that I'm having trouble with both, one second. That you probably just had to decide how to spend taxpayers' money. And instead, you're in a time now where you have to step up and fundraise, like any other nonprofit. And if you're uncomfortable with that, you need to get a committee together to help you with it or you need to step down, resign and find people who will fundraise. This is way beyond what little bit you can raise in hope to increase your taxes. You need to find two permanent homes, it sounds like. You need to get El Pomar involved, you need to think outside the box. And if anybody is coming in and causing disturbances in our libraries, whether homeless, unangry people for whatever reason, they need to be banned. You need to ban them from a significant amount of time, just like it's happening on airlines and any other place that people no longer know how to behave. So step up, figure out how to fundraise and solve this problem. Don't close anything, move forward, move forward. Thank you.
We have one more online, name is Joe. You can unmute Joe. Joe, you're up, if you can unmute, there you go.
Good evening. First off, my name is Joe Pelkin, the president of the South Face Community Association. I spoke at your last meeting and I'm representing two hundred and thirty-three homes that all constantly use the Rock Remen Library. I'm not going to repeat all the previous comments, I'm just going to say ditto because I think they're all excellent and I asked the board to please consider those with all due diligence. A couple of things I would like to ask and I would actually like to have an answer if possible is there seems to be some confusion perhaps as how we got to where we are right now. I would ask that the board consider having something like a town hall meeting that explains the process of how we got to where we are with the possibility of closing two libraries. Secondly, what the role was of the consultant and as was previously brought up, how many people did they actually talk to? I would like to see that information. Finally, I'd like to know how much did the library district pay for this consultant for their work? Getting back to the previous gentleman, I have to agree completely that I think that the library has now gotten way out of doing traditional library services. If you look at all the services be providing to the homeless, mostly downtown, it is taking away from other folks such as Rock Remen. I also ask you to look at the actual costs. The issue comes up that Rock Remen and the other branch are owned and it costs more, or excuse me, they're rented and it costs more. But I would also like you to look outside the box and consider how much it actually costs to run Rock Remen when compared to, let's say, Penrose. Is there the number of homeless services at Penrose compared to Rock Remen? No, I don't think so, and you're paying less for that at Rock Remen. What is this chain or this wrought iron fence going to cost us that's being proposed for Penrose? What's it going to cost and could it be better used for other services such as keeping two other branches open? So and finally, I would ask you to look at the big picture, especially the community and trying to keep the identity and then the inclusiveness to, when you talk about inclusiveness, please include the folks at Rock Remen as being inclusive to our community. And I was wondering if anyone was willing to answer my questions.
Joe, at this time, we do not answer questions during public comment. We take down notes and, and as we have stated in various messages via email or at various meetings, decisions have not been made. We are still in the midst of receiving a final report and then digging into that before final decisions are made. I know that there are very, there is a lot of concerns about both libraries and about other libraries, but as a as a library district, we have to consider the entire El Paso County as we make decisions. So I thank you for your comment. I think they're well taken and, but there will be, you can, you are free to review any of the minutes that we have there online. I believe there's also the presentation that the consultants presented to us online as well through a YouTube video. You're all welcome to come to meetings and listen because we are a public entity. So that's all I can offer you at this time because decisions have not been made and we try not to make, give answers to public comment. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed up for a little comment.
Okay, well, I know that you guys probably aren't ready for this, but all the new applicants for the position for the board, if you could all come up here and introduce yourselves, I, we greatly appreciate it so everybody could see you. And if you up there in the front, yeah.
Yes.
My name's Kristy Mills.
Excuse me, let's try to listen.
My name's Kristy Mills, my home library is the Monument Bridge Library. I'm a vision therapist as my occupation. I applied for this because I love libraries. I've been a member of I speak library district since nineteen ninety-seven. And I'm just happy to be here and happy to see.
Thank you.
I'm Miranda Clark, I moved here eighteen years ago from the Marshall Islands. And if you know where that is, good for you. It's in between Hawaii and Guam, very small little island. And when we moved here, my children moved in high school and junior and middle school. And when I found the library system, I thought, oh, this is the greatest ever. And I have raised my kids and now I'm a grandma who loves to take her granddaughters to see the library, do everything that's available at the library, everything from the STEM projects to the summer reading program. I also, someone said the DL with the library, all of these things are things I really feel strong about, having it be available to all of us. And the library is now kind of our city's circle now. And I think we need to find a way to keep that available. Thank you.
My name is Samantha Christensen, I'm an associate professor of history and director of undergrad studies at the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs. I'm also a parent and a member of this community. My home libraries are Penrose or the old Colorado City branch, kind of split loyalties, I guess. Yeah, and I don't know how much you want my way of introduction, but I'm, you know, I think libraries are a foundational institution in our civil society. And I think, you know, as an academic, as a community member and as an immigrant, it's, it's time to give that.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Miller and I have lived here for just almost three years. Prior to that, I was from Nashville where I worked at, volunteered at the library there. And as soon as I moved here, I started volunteering, I'm at twenty-one C. I do anywhere from two to three times a week as a volunteer and I do whatever it is they need me to do. I have, I'm listening to some of the things that you're talking, that the people are talking about today. This, I have not heard of these, but I'm, it's like, this is very interesting. But the comment I want to make is that I, when I lived in Nashville, I served on the homeowners board for over a thousand homes. And I was the vice president and some of the things that we face there are some of the same things you're facing here. And I can relate. But I'm a, I read all the time, I've got like a stack of six books at home and I can read a book probably every three days. So I'm just, I want to support the library, I really did find the comment about fundraising, I'd like to look into more about that.
Thank you.
Since we're moving away from the microphone on the table now to assist our folks doing virtually, we could use the microphone the rest of the way. How far away do you want to go? Uh, four and a half inches.
Okay, there. Good measurement.
My name's Raul Henderson and I have been a resident of the Colorado Springs area since two thousand and three, so twenty-one years. And I'm an army veteran and business consultant, primarily working with the federal government, but also working with the private sector quite a bit. And currently in the chair of the Citizen Outreach Group, which is an advisory board to the board of county commissioners for El Paso County. And I don't think I'm different than anybody up here in so much as none of us would be here if we didn't love the library. So my wife and I talk regularly about how the public library is one of our two favorite institutions in the United States, that in national parks, I think. Between those two, you cannot get a better education. And I love, love, love that the library is open to everyone. Everyone that is a citizen in our community has access. And the only thing that is a limiting factor for how much you can learn is how much drive and how much time you've learned. That's it, everything is right here. And I, that is a precious resource and one that I want to invest in, one that I want to expand. And again, I don't think anybody would disagree with one of these comments. But yes, I'm very, very passionate about the libraries and all the various services that it offers and how the library district truly, or the libraries within our district are truly are cornerstones of the various communities that they're in. So it's an invaluable resource that I'd love to be able to meet.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am Kenny Kenuki. I am a retired army colonel, twenty-four years, in some change. I was assigned here like twelve years ago, I had to retire to come back. I have a recent transplant, so if you sound angry, we found this place and we wanted to come back to Colorado Springs. This place, and we wanted to come back to Colorado Springs. Uh, I have a family of uh six. My wife and I homeschool our four kids. So libraries for us have for the last seventeen years been a cornerstone to their education. Uh, in the last year since I've been retired, I helped stand up a Makerspace and a three D printing program at Harper-Holmes Library in Texas. Uh, I came here and I was happy to see the uh programs that we have here in the Colorado Springs community. But so instead of working on Makerspace, my wife and I ended up teaching swing dancing to homeschoolers at his library, our our library of choice. The reason I applied for the sport position was, you know, ever since my youth in high school, I lived overseas, came back to the States, and I have a whole lot when I get back to the States. The libraries were so fundamental to giving me resources and access to information as far as I can remember. So uh so I figured now I'm retired, I'm a contractor of Ford Carson, so don't hate, but now that I'm retired, I figure I have some happiness to get back to the community that I hope to make my permanent community.
Uh, good evening, buddy. I'm Denash Campbell. I am a resident of Colorado Springs for ten years. The day after I moved out here, my wife took me to the library and I said, uh, our home library distance. I'm a father of two young boys, four and two years old, and our youngest, we actually utilized the Lena program, which was instrumental in helping getting him conversing better. Uh, now he just talk our ear off. But uh, at their job, I'm a data engineer and data scientist, and part of why I wanted to apply for the board is because I firmly believe that technology is fundamental to expanding and improving the library. The library system is not only a conduit of knowledge, but it's it's a central location for people to commune, uh for the homeless when they need help, because, you know, people tend to cuckoo and and not want to deal with them, and they're human just like the rest of us. And that's what a library is for, is historically, it's for knowledge and sharing and helping. And that that's truly what I desire with PPLD.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Allen. Uh, I grew up in Scotland. I'm an uh immigrant and a naturalized American citizen. Uh, I'm married. Uh, we have three sons and two grandsons. Uh, most of my working life, I spent designing semiconductor memory chips. Uh, we moved to Colorado Springs in nineteen eighty-two, and I've been a member of PPLD ever since. And uh, two books I've read recently that I liked, A Time of Gifts by Patrick Lee Furmer about the walk from Cork of Holland to Constantinople, and also The Anomaly by Hervé Lutelier. It's a side by throw.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tiffany Antender. Uh, if you think of the Lion King song, uh, Tiffany. I have been living here in Colorado Springs for a little bit over four years. I work for the Department of Human Services, Children, Human Family Services. Um, I agree with everything that has been said. I believe that libraries are foundational and that they are should be synonymous with the community. This is something that I want to get back to into my community.
Hi, uh, my name's Kimber Smith. I also am faculty at UCCS. I'm a cultural anthropologist. I work with communities, museums, um, I've I've worked in a number of different countries. I've been here since two thousand and six. I don't even know where to call my home branch because I go to a lot of them. I work with regional history and the archives here a lot. And I'm also very interested in digital humanities and how we can do more outreach to communities, make more information available in more formats for more people. Um, what else? I agree with the foundational role of the library in societies, but I think we have a fantastic library system here, and I'm excited at the opportunity potentially to be here.
Thank you.
Uh, so I'm Paul Paris. Uh, I've been here for about three years. Uh, my company moved here from Texas. They originally said, hey, Paul, when did you move west? How about LA or Phoenix? And I said, Colorado Springs. They said, no. Uh, so two days later, they called me back and said, we reconsidered. How about Denver? And I said, Colorado Springs. Two days later to that and said, okay, Colorado Springs, so we're here. Um, east is my home library uh as well. Um, I'm I'm currently a a director of operations uh for a national auto auction company, so oversee the whole nation, but um, yeah, the library is a pillar to the community, something me and my family are huge supporters of. Uh, when my youngest son needs to pick me up, we go to the library. That's what we do. Um, he and I are there weekly, uh, if not more. Um, but yeah, we love the libraries. We want to support everybody.
Thank you, and I think we have one more that's online, correct?
Correct.
Yes, hi, my name is Dean Borger. I'm uh greeting you from Atlanta, the first TV uh business trip I've had in many years. I uh uh did twenty years in the military. This is my fourth time living in Colorado Springs for probably a total of twenty years. So the first, one of the first times we lived here, my primary branch was east. Then the next time we came back, it was twenty-one C. Now we're out in Falcon, so Hyprar is my uh home library at this point. Uh, my background is analytics. Uh, a lot of problem solving that we have to do has an uh numerical background. That is what my strengths are in.
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking your time to uh introduce yourselves. We'll have, we'll get to know you a little bit more later. Uh, but I wanted uh the audience and our TV audience, our Zoom audience to get to see you and get to talk to you a little bit or listen to you talk a little bit. Thank you very much for taking the time to fill out the information, the application. Okay, let's move on with the agenda. Governance, do you have a report?
Yes, so we did a lot of things in governance. Pity tummy here apparently, so um we finalized some things for the board retreat, which is coming up on the, because it's twenty seventh, so sorry, next week, okay? So, yes, so um we'll try, we'll try to have uh anything you guys need reviewed for that out earlier in the week, so there's time to read that, if we can. Um, we also discussed um changes to the um bylaws, so we were looking at a couple of things. And we were reviewing attendance policy, and then we were also reviewing um we had talked about uh onboarding processes for uh new trustees, and so we were trying to figure out who would be a good point of contact for that. And so we discussed, and we thought the the vice president would be a good person to be kind of the point of contact as we're transitioning to onboarding new people. Um, so we're we're looking at what that would look like to add that into the vice president's description in the bylaws, so we have a proposal for that. We'll bring it up and talk about it, and you guys can also think. Um, and then trying to think. Oh, um, board policies and um just following up on um sort of some things that I know Internal Affairs has been working on as well, um, but the Colorado. But um, we we had talked last year about just having really a a layered approach to how we have policies, having over being kind of guided and then uh board policies then policies on the administrative level. And what we found is that uh the Col- Colorado State actually has a definition of libraries and some legal guidance. Um, so what we were discussing was um possibly having that in place as our main guiding sort of document or source material and flowing from there. Um, so we'll we'll bring that board once we have it a little bit more formulated, and that'll be a discussion later on, but let's hope we talk about.
Anybody else uh that worked with Julie, you know, any other thoughts? Internal Affairs.
We talked about a totally different guiding light.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so we'll we'll thumb wrestle for that. Uh, no, so we talked about the U R A, which I see our team over here, they'll be putting zinting to us uh shortly. Um, so we asked them a bunch of questions, and we prepped them that Scott was going to also have a bunch of questions. So we'll, they're they're prepped and ready to go. Um, and then we talked a little bit more about sort of that policy change that we're making um philosophically. Uh, I put some some short um kind of samples together that I presented to the to the committee that uh everyone seemed to like, and so I think we're going to move that direction, just the way that it's formatted, nothing specific in the way that it's worded, just the the formatting of how it's done, and decided, we talked about putting together a policy committee to actually build those out uh sooner rather than later, just because um we turned off the other ones a few months ago, and so at this point, we're about four months of operating without board policies, so silver bylaws, don't worry, we still
I can sleep tonight.
You'd sleep, it's fine, like, we're not, not just floating in the water. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. Uh, I saw that the call had gone out for people who were interested in joining the policy committee. Angela and Julie had uh responded back. Um, so I'll look to you, Dor, to see how you want to handle that. If it's three, then we have to do board calls for it, and so um that was really what we talked about, so.
Okay, well, we'll have to have a little discussion on that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Angela, you want to add anything?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hit my mute button. Um, not to the board policy, I think Aaron did a great job covering it. I just want to say, I'm so sorry. My husband threw his back out. I just took him to the um after-hours care and um, I'm sorry that I'm not there with you and the new board members who applied. You know, I'm I'm so happy that you have started this process, and I'm just sorry I couldn't be there to meet you in person, but got to take care of his back, and then I'll be there next time, I promise.
Okay, thank you, Angela. Uh, Public Affairs.
Oh, we did not meet.
We did not meet, okay. Uh, do we have any of our liaison from online or?
I heard from a few of them, and they are all out of town, the ones that I heard from.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, any trustee comments that need to be made at this time?
I just wanted to say, I went to the soccer game. It was awesome, so I appreciate you guys, whoever worked on getting that together. My kids had a great time. Switchbacks won, so.
That would even better.
It was even better, lots of fireworks, so pretty good time.
Uh, and I just want to say that I've been to several events that uh the library had been in attendance, resource fairs and uh the Fiesta Patrias, I know they were there, and uh so uh being in our community and being available, having access, having fun activities for everyone. And I also want to invite everyone, uh, I'm sure that Bertie will bring it up, but Latina Voices is this weekend, and you will be uh uh, you're never surprised at the talent that they bring in of, and they are Latina women or groups, so I invite anyone and everyone to go. It's at twenty-one C. I believe it starts at ten thirty, and uh uh there will be uh, I believe it's a retired general that's going to speak, another young woman that uh has made it in life and is doing very well, and then we're going to have a dance group, I believe. Yeah, so uh, that's all I have to say. So friends, Bertie Miller.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have, you have my report in your packet. And in addition to that, I'd like to point out that we are getting ready for our big fall book sale. And that will be starting on um the eleventh, which is Friday night, and only friends are allowed to um buy the books on Friday night. So if you're not a friend, you still have time to join us. And then the sale will be on Saturday and Sunday. So it's at East Library, and I know east is closed right now, but I'm hoping that the parking lot will be finished and we'll be ready for the sale in October. In addition to that, we are getting ready for our Sippin Shop. This is our third annual Sippin Shop. And uh briefly, it is an appreciation for Friends volunteers and PPLD staff. That will be on December the eighth at East. It is an invitation-only event, but it is our chance to say thank you to all of our volunteers and to the staff, the great staff at PPLD. Thank you.
Thank you, Bertie. Okay, uh, the foundation. There she is.
So I do want to take an opportunity and say a few words because I know that usually I just send in my report, but this report does not give me enough, I don't know, room to express how amazing it has been working through our strategic planning process.
Uh, the foundation board, uh, it has taken a lot of groundwork to dig in and find all the the institutional knowledge, all of the the things that we we didn't know, we didn't know, we didn't know um on both sides. Uh, so I can say that first session, it was two weeks ago today. Uh, I think we all left in such a great place and on the same page, and uh, I feel like it's been a long time since we've been there.
I just want to emphasize the work is paying off, and we are moving forward, and I'm so excited for the second session. Um, so thank you all for your patience. We're we're working on it. We're getting there. Um, everybody, everybody's in agreement. Foundation exists to support PPLD, and that was never a question, uh, so I was very grateful to hear that coming from everybody. Um, so yeah, I cannot wait to report to you next month uh and tell you how amazing our next session is. Uh, and I want to also point out uh the El Paso County Workforce Center grant. I think that might be one of the first times we've actually gone for that for our actual employees. We've worked on that for for programs that we have provided to patrons. Uh, so I work with HR, and it's a small group, but we uh we're making great progress with that, and it sounds like they may want to work with us more. So that's very exciting and could potentially help us with some of our our turnover and staffing issues. You know, we have a wonderfully trained HR as it is, but we can make them even better. I mean, you should never have a a a good enough HR. Uh, and finally, something. I mean. Something very important I did hear from this board was the fact that the friends have um offered to pay for the change order on our mobile library. Uh, so that's very exciting, just another another mobile library out there to serve our community even more, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Randy, numbers, numbers, numbers. Hope they're good.
Yeah. Good evening, board. Um, so again, well, I'll just, I'll go through this uh fairly quickly. Um, PPLD as a whole, um, our property tax numbers run up about five hundred thousand for August, and I said this last month that our revenue stream for property tax will um actually started to go back to, I mean, the norm is it's pretty slow from um August through the end of the year as um the way they collect the taxes for us and then distribute. Um, specific ownership taxes are off about a hundred thousand. I obviously have no idea when somebody's going to go out and buy cars or something like that, but um actually, um, you know, like, I'd left that pretty relative to last year, so um I'm actually kind of happy with that being where it's at because of the economy and, you know, what people are going through with uh increased costs and everything. Um, the next section, uh, operating revenue, you can see we're up there about six hundred and thirty thousand, and again, that's um entirely due to the interest income that we're getting off from our long long-term uh investment account. Um, that may begin to change a little bit now that they've raised interest rates, so um, we'll just keep an eye on it, but that's, it's been a a nice number to have that. Um, the intergovernmental stuff, we're actually working with uh Courtney right now and their board uh to streamline some of the distribution that we have from them, because all this money on the top side of this area comes through the foundation because they're a five oh one C three, and and we need that in any of the grants that we get. So that's, that's mostly timing. Um, bottom line, uh, again, right now, it's at this point in time, it looks, it looks great, and and there's numbers in there that are kind of uh um representative of, we've gotten all of our revenue, our property tax revenue pretty much for the year, so it'll begin to, our bank Our bank account and that revenue number will start to bleed off as we. You know, incur the expenses that are always there every month, but there won't be the revenue there to bolster it, so we'll we'll see that come down. General fund, you know, that's our operating fund, and so most of our revenue and expenses are gonna go through that, so. Um, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time there, but it's very similar to um, the district as a whole. Um. Expenses in detail, um, all the departments are running in black of finance and. Um, kind of our interdepartmental, um, department, interdepartmental kind of covers the expenses for the whole district that don't really apply to specific. And some of finances stuff is like that. Uh, we absorb the surgery fees for the. For the property taxes, and that's fairly large, so that's that's part of that hundreds there, and then. Um, we have added um, a few extra people in there that um, for manpower needs and. And that's that's causing part of that minus. Uh, and there's and there's probably some one-time costs in that year-to-date or a month-to-date number that um. Have been, you know, month. Broken down by month, but the actual year-to-date one-time cost is sitting in the in the year-to-date. And capital, and we have. As of the end of August, we got about eight hundred thousand, again, we've got stuff in encumbrances that aren't showing here. And I know there's, there is a. Bunch of RFPs that are out um, waiting for approval and going through the board approval process, so. That number will get bigger, and then um. The year-to-date number for expenditures, or I'm sorry, the the total budget for expenditures doesn't do those rolling. Uh, funds over from the previous year, and because uh, capital funds are multi-year funds, that's that's kind of a standard practice. For us is to roll things over that don't get finished in the previous year, so. Um, of the amount that was approved for this year, we're we're at about um, uh. Little over ha- or third of of what we budgeted for this year, and and there's work, they're still working through. Um, some of these big projects, the parking lot for East obviously isn't done, so we haven't paid all that, that'll be a a big add on us when we see that. Self-insurance fund, um, that's. Um, the revenue side is is. Uh, great, it's all, you know, uh, our country trips are in line. What we allocated for that is is basically um, what we expected. Our expenses are have leveled out a lot from two years ago, um. You know, we s- we see spikes in different categories of the insurance, depending on what's going on with individual employees, and that's the expected. And uh, you know, we're. That's, that's actually um, running. Pretty even, it's the worst I think. And then the last page is just adjustments I've done, uh, but I'll have a bunch more of these to add after October's meetings. Uh, as we're getting closer to year-end and we start doing budget adjustments and. Stuff like that. Anybody have any questions?
I mean, we have any questions? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, let me see, I lost my.
It is, like services, I'll keep mine really brief. Because you're going to hear the presentation about our successful summer adventure, but a couple of things I wanted to um. Mention tonight is um, to thank Michael and the Regional History and Genealogy Department, they have been able to. Refer patrons that are calling with requests for the former Pike's Peak News Finder to our new digital collection. This has happened much sooner than we expected, because they've worked so hard on that, so. Um, we're really excited to start to share that digital resource now. And then the other thing I wanted, that's not in the report, uh, but we just received this week. Collection Management has been busy with a lot of things, obviously, they've been busy processing books to add to the collection as always, but they've also been. Uh, moving along with the ILS RFP process, and then in addition to that, specifically Greg Rose just completed. Um, the request that we asked him to provide as to the estimate of what it would take to also begin to lower the shelving height. At the East Library, so because he's. Worked with those past vendors that completed the project here at Penrose, it looks like we're going to be able to do something similar. At East with lowering those shelves by cutting them down and and saving in that cost, so. We're really excited to see that come in. Any questions?
Um, how, how confident are we in the fix at Rockman?
You wanna ask me that? I'll give you an opinion, but there is Travis.
Travis and Scotty worked on that fix, and I think Scotty also is pretty.
So.
To answer questions.
I saw some super sketchy pictures and.
I sent those pictures because I got them from Scotty.
You can all look at those pictures.
Uh huh.
Where everyone can. This is the stink hole over at Rockman, and more importantly was was the. I'll say the the fix, right?
Yeah, this is, this is the the beginning, uh, just kind of shows what the size was, and then. That's.
Oh my.
They uh, they had to dig out.
Oh my god.
Uh, to get um, most of the, I don't know if you can see, um, sorry. The uh, brother thing right here, um. That's the pipe that was in there that deteriorated, and they had to pull at least twenty feet of that out. So, that uh, that took, that took some time, and then uh.
That's.
This is.
But this is the fix that you told us is sketchy, right? What we talked about.
This is what I called sketchy.
Yeah, yeah, this is right, okay, this is the sketchy you're talking about. Yeah, not the whole itself, Aaron's talking about the thing.
Yeah, so the uh, that's the the pipe up there, that's the um. That's still the remainder of the uh, culvert, the the metal corrugated pipe. And they took a. Plastic corrugated pipe and just kind of shoved it up in there, and because they were two different sizes. They fill up the the gap with um. Basically like a foam that you'd use at your house to like seep out drabs. Uh, it was, it was not, uh, it was it was it was not made for that at all. Um, very few phones are are made for that, I mean, that's not even a, I think that's a open cell phone that you would use at your house.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Do you know which way the water flow is on this? So from the plastic towards the metal? Okay, that's better.
Well, it 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 is and it isn't, uh, the remainder of the metal pipe, what happens. What happened to that pipe was the ice melt that they use in the parking lot. Made its way in there, and because it's corrugated, like like the black plastic. It holds water, a little bit of water, so that just sits there and it deteriorates the metal. So, so. Yeah, yeah, since eighty-five, so we don't, we don't know exactly how long it's been. Well, it disappeared. But yeah, that's uh. Okay, we have the last, you know, of of the final. Repair, so to speak.
So i- if I remember the email thread correctly. We asked them to do more of a proper fix than what they did, we actually talked to them about this, and they. Is that true?
Right, yeah, we we, I I was out there for the whole generation of it, and um. The the company that was working on it was a concrete company, it wasn't even, they weren't plumbers, um, and. They actually, they actually kept asking me questions about, what did I think, should we do it this way, should we turn that way now? You know, and and I kind of told them that. You know, I was representing the library, I was not representing the owner of the property, so I really, I I couldn't sell them one way or the other. And I did, you know, I I did take pictures and so forth, so I said later.
When, and also when we were there, and Dora, thank you very much for coming there as well, so um. And Randy and uh, myself also went there, and Scotty, when you were talking about that, there was a question like. Should we, we need to bring an engineer to look at that, to ensure that it's fixed appropriately, so several times Scotty repeated that, but then. The point was that, what's going to be the more affordable way to fix that issue? That was the, so conversation there on the other side, so.
Yeah, and um, they took, they took the twenty feet out, and then they brought in the uh, another company with a camera. And and ran the camera up in it to see what the integrity of the remaining pipe was. But it was inconclusive, and even the plumber said that, but. They left it at that, but you could also tell part of the twenty feet that was taken out, it looked intact. And until I poked it with my finger, my finger went through. So, yeah. I I don't know what the remainder of the pipe pipe is, but but I'm pretty sure that it's. It's 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 gonna be the same as what was taken out, you know.
And Tiuna, can you uh, uh, speak on the importance of why this needs to be fixed? Uh, behind Rockman, isn't there a book drop there or?
There is actually a book drop, and even though we, I I believe Scotty, that was you and the Rockman staff, they put cones there. To ensure that people would not go, because again, it was not safe, people were still driving. Um, and just that's, that was the fear we had, because we did not want anyone to get hurt there. Because book drop is behind, even one of the employees, the staff members told me, and I was so. Happy to hear that she was okay, she went and she poked a finger, and that actually went like, like it was so. Like, I I was like, I'm so glad you did not get hurt, it's like, why just like playing around with holes, and I'm like. Just collapsed, yeah, that's what. That's what uh, she shared, and again, and also we experienced flooding as well, uh, previously. Uh, and uh, we, they did, did you, would you also speak, Scotty, on the fact that when they opened it, they were. We found out, like, we saw so much debris and stuff that collected there, and it caused also flooding.
Right, yeah, and then from this this picture, you can tell, see, they. All they did was pull the asphalt off the top layer, so everything under the asphalt was was completely gone, there's no soil. To actually hold up the asphalt, so that's why we were having. The sink, that's where everything was dropping like that, and the the catch basin where you can see the 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 top of. Sorry, um, the the top of the catch basin right here, that it's it's taken off and flipped over right now. But that was the part that we, we had a problem last year with, when we had the flooding, the catch basin was full of mud. So when we had those heavy rains, it had nowhere to go. It just filled up the parking lot and it made its way into our, our building, the back doors of our building. So, you know, and and it was just. Pieces of pipe, there was just rocks, I mean, it was just a, it was a mess, it looked like a, well, it was like a bomb went off, you know.
Can I, can I add? So the other thing that that we asked about was, so when the camera was put down the pipe is. There is debris down there, there's rocks down there, there's mud, and I mean, he can only go so far, but. It's still in there.
It's still.
And and when they pushed that corrugated, that smaller corrugated stuff in there, it didn't take any of it out, it just pushed it down there. Cramped it in there more broadly, I mean, but.
And he ran the camera, I think he said it was fifty to sixty feet up in the the pipe, and and yeah, there was a lot of. Rocks and debris in there.
Yes, but even with this fix. With this fix.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a guarantee we won't uh, get a flood again?
No, this is, no.
Because don't, we aren't, we're responsible for the flood, right?
We, we were responsible last time, and again, we're having negotiations about certain things, we did have a meeting.
We did bring this up.
That we did bring it up, bring this up, but again, uh, the. The rent will increase by, I think they said by three percent, I believe. And also, it includes more increase will be to um, CAM and all of that, so. Randy and I are looking at that, and that was one of our. Um.
Generally, the way CAM works is, even though they're setting the bill to have those work done now, and it gets rolled into their total CAM costs and gets spread across the tenants. So we will see the cost from this.
What you're saying is, they actually saved us money with the.
So that the other thing, and and Scott would um, maybe was gonna say something about this, but this this was an interesting thing on me about this. This drainage, it's the only point on the backside of all these buildings that is draining the water out of that area, and it all slopes. From Rockrim and the edge of the other side of the parking lot to that point.
Yes.
And there's a big hill behind where housing was built there, and it was, it's steeper than it probably was at one time. So all of this stuff is added up to, it's. It's, I mean, our expectation is it's gonna happen again.
Yeah, we we reduced the pipe, so we don't even know what the proper volume. It can handle at this point now, you know, without some type of an engineer to look into this.
And it's the same, like. Flex seal whatever on both ends of the pipe, when they cut up the middle section came out.
No, the. The the one end, the one end goes into the catch basin, and then the other end, yeah, goes into the uh, the old pipe.
Okay.
I believe what I remember is they they basically built a coupling to go into the retainage. Holder to size it down.
Into the catch basin?
Well, yeah, from the catch basin down to the smaller corrugated.
They 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 did actually, well, yeah, what they did is they they balled a bucket of uh. It's it's a uh, it's like a waterproof concrete, and they just continued to fill it in until they made it work. It would accommodate the smaller pipe, so I have, I have a picture of that, I just didn't, I didn't, I didn't put this, put that one over here.
We have all the pictures, and there hasn't been a video, right?
Yes, yes, I have several videos.
Can you go to the next, the next slide? Yeah, okay, so if I'm, if I'm reading this properly. The hill, is that on the top of the screen there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I'm just looking at this, and I'm seeing all the broken asphalt towards the mount or towards the hill.
Right.
Um, and I, that goes all the way down?
Yes.
Is it, okay, so. Isn't that a problem? Because eventually all that water's gotta go someplace, and it's probably gonna go within those cracks first. Before it even gets to that drain.
Correct, yeah, like, it'll it'll go to the weakest spot.
Okay, and I'm sure that the fix for that was to seal. All of those cracks, which if I'm looking at this picture, that's a lot of cracks that that are there. And.
Doesn't look like that much seal.
And oh, I I don't think you can see all that. And how much are we actually paying monthly for CAM? Right now, or for this, is it around ten, twelve?
Oh, it's ten, well, yeah.
And it's, uh, annual, it's two hundred and forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that includes, that includes the.
Yes.
Well, and you have to remember that that uh, shopping center was built way, way before that housing addition was built. And obviously, you can, just from what we've seen, there was never any new engineering work, and wherever you build a house, if you have. Uh, or any subdivision, and you have dirt and and uh, all the bushes that. Uh, can absorb water, and now we've added asphalt and sidewalk. Concrete, it has to go somewhere, and obviously, it's going here, and uh. Uh, and that's, I I think that's part of the problem, but that needs some new engineering work done. So since we have that housing up there, I mean, those are beautiful homes up there, so, but that's what's causing a lot of that as well. Uh, to, to cause that drainage problem along with the flooding that occurs in the library.
So also, what we understood from the owner and the property manager, the property manager is that this. We thought maybe this, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. We were thinking maybe this, uh, there was a ninety-degree elbow on this taking it towards uh, Vindicator. Um, but we actually think it goes straight out to a rock rim, which. I mean, you can't even see the end of Rockrim, so um. That building right there that you see is Safeway. And one of the comments that the owner made to us is that they don't own the property around Safeway. So there's. In his defense, he's got other issues besides just getting a. So there's, in his defense, he's got other issues besides just getting a backhoe back there and. Digging up a trench all the way to the street, even if that was uh feasible. Um he's gotta work out with Safeway, you know, it's your property, we've gotta go through to get this. You got some skin in the game and first that, you know, there's a legal process without. He's he's got other issues besides just the drainage pipe.
Right, so I didn't mean to derail us that far, but.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you guys for.
Thank you for staying there the whole time.
It was interesting, um any uh comments on any of the other service, uh support services reports that we have? Communication, facilities, human resources, IT, safety and innovation.
Uh I do have a question about the East Library, how's that going? I haven't driven by there, so I'm curious how the AV is going.
Yeah, uh we're three quarters of the way.
Okay, good.
We brought uh. And then this is the final product. So, yeah, this is, um and there we go, there's some new uh curb gutters they're putting in and then. Here's the new book drop, our new book drop, like the new uh asphalt into the book drop. And.
I I understand why everybody is oohing and aahing because the original look of that whole parking lot was horrible.
Right, yeah.
And we could only patch it so many times.
That was the last patch right there.
Yeah, it was in bad, bad shape, but.
Yeah, but it's it's uh, yeah, and and they're striking more tonight, actually, over on the uh the circular. Front circular drive and those parking spaces, they'll uh they'll they'll strike those tonight and do all of the uh the handicapped parking spaces over there.
So so kind of going back to the whole. Uh book sale that's coming up.
Yeah.
How confident are we? What's still needed, what what still needs to be done?
This this will be complete by the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even better, okay, cool.
And and.
Barring any weather problems.
Even if we have weather problems, we're still gonna, we're still, we've cushioned ourselves.
Okay.
Where, yeah, we we've given ourselves at least, not quite a week, you know, just just for weather. So, yeah, we're we're good, so the book sale.
Okay, cool.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, um Teona, you're on.
Okay, so thank you everyone, um I all want to take this opportunity and to thank the communications department. For putting together this amazing report that all of you uh board of trustees received. This is the report from its twenty twenty-three annual report, we also, we already have this on our website. To um highlight some of the accomplishments for twenty twenty-three. And our plan also is to make it more accessible to have also a video there. Um and Randy doesn't know about it yet, but he will be in that video, sorry Randy. So because since we're going to talk about numbers. Uh so and uh so also what our amazing um PPLD team does every day. Uh that's just wanted to share that with all of you. Also, I had a very good meeting with Dr. Bolton. Uh and the president of PPSC, he showed a lot of support uh for us as neighbors and as. Also, he acknowledged the challenges that we face, it's not just PPLD challenges. But also the challenges of the whole community, uh and also he did uh provide a letter of support and. I was very uh pleased to see that he also highlighted their own challenges in that letter, so and it was uh. It it was very uh positive that we as neighbors, we support each other and he's there uh for us. Also, I had a meeting with Jamie Fabros, the chief of staff from the mayor's office, and we do have quarterly meetings and we also discuss. Some of the challenges that happen in this community, that also that we're not alone, uh very often what I hear. As someone who is in charge of the library district, that very often I hear that that's your problem. Uh and uh it feels good to see that it's not just my problem, right, and and the community is working together. Finding out different ways how we're going to um address those uh those issues. Um I also had a meeting with uh Michelle Jesski, she is the chief librarian, city librarian and executive director of the Republic Library. We also have check-ins, I believe, quarterly, since uh they and us, we do face very similar challenges. And she shared some of the budgetary challenges that they're going through as well and um trying to come up ways to. Uh be more strategic in our approaches, they will be finally opening their downtown campus in November. Uh they were closed for about over two years there, we're renovating that.
Oh, okay.
So renovating, yes. Uh so and also um we are now members of. Urban Library Council and it's been already very useful personally for me, there are a lot of communication is going on. Uh nationwide when it comes through different library systems and I, that's what's a misery loss company, right? That's an expression, uh so uh just to look at that as a community, we are a part of country. But also look at as a country and nation, uh talking about those challenging issues, adopting some of our. Cha- uh solutions that we came up here and that's that's very uh pleasant to hear that their individuals were asking also. Us for our opinion and today Denise and I had a meeting and she mentioned there was another meeting that. They were uh you're actually using Pike's Creek Library District as an example, have to be sustainable. So our focus is mostly is whatever we do at being sustainable and looking ahead. It's not just to solve a problem for today or tomorrow, but for many years to uh to come. And also many two springs library uh opening is so far on track, I will have more information, I have meeting with Denise Howell on Monday. Uh so I will be sharing that information um as well uh with uh with all of you. And last, my last thing is that finally, after two years, I think. I found some time to look in some files that was in my office and. Laura brought it up to my attention because we were getting a lot of questions about the history of the Penrose Library. Why do we have this land, why do we have this building? And the amazing thing is that a building. And I showed it to Michael Doherty and he's like, why don't we have those documents in our office? Why are those in your office? I'm like, that's not my fault, so. And so it was interesting, on February twelfth nineteen sixty-six, Chase Stone, president of the El Palmer Foundation, announced to a gathering of city. And the county officials and interested citizens, a grant over two million dollars to provide the community with a new building to be known as the Penrose Public Library. The grant include the purchase of the property east of the existing library and. I didn't know that there was another library close to us, to Penrose Library, but because of the proximity, I believe that library. I can't remember the name now, I should have uh, oh, it's Reed Branch, that was, that was closed. When they opened the Penrose Library because of the proximity, but what it shows that this community always supported. Public libraries and distance institution and also it's our responsibility to take care of the property that we were entrusted. So and also I appreciate Jeriah for his comments that to see that now visibility and it's it's a different atmosphere here. And that's a hope that we'll implement that uh in all our branches, so do you have any questions?
Well, thank you very much, that was good history, uh and it is a a never a dull moment in the library. Okay, we move down to presentations, we have some new staff and promotions that we want to bring up, uh. Becca, there she is, the creative ones. Believe me, yeah, they are strategic and creative.
Yes, um so Jen, her name is here, she's up on the Zoom.
Oh, I see her.
She is our new strategy and innovation training coordinator. Uh Jen's been with the district ten years, she's worked in a variety of locations, including Rock Remen. East and now Library Twenty-One C in our department. Um she's done things like work in the maker spaces and provide training to both staff and patrons. Which makes her a fantastic fit for this position as she is continuing to work in the maker spaces and provide training. Mainly to staff at this point, uh with a lot of focus on maker spaces and studios, but we're also working. Uh to help other departments, like she's helping a little bit with some IT training right now, so. We're very excited to have Jen join the department.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just say that I'm really excited about my new position and I'm really looking forward to. Providing more much needed training for staff um so that they can better help our patrons, so thank you.
Thank you. And now what we've all been waiting for, summer adventure.
Do you have some more background?
In my mind.
Are we doing that a little bit of?
So, my name is Krista Funky, I'm a librarian in the programming department. My name is Rachel Martin, I'm also a librarian in the programming department, so we are gonna share the twenty twenty-four summer adventure and other things that happened this year. Yes, so um twenty twenty-four summer adventure presented by Children's Hospital Colorado took place between May thirty-first and July thirty-first. It encouraged patients of all ages to read, be creative and explore new places and ideas for thirty days to build habits of learning and growing and engaging the mind. Of course, yay. We had a great year in twenty twenty-four, we celebrated our fiftieth anniversary of providing a summer reading and learning program. And we tied our theme into the Summer Olympics and Living in Olympic City, USA. Our theme was Go for Gold and featured animals of different abilities participating in sports and reading. Our big goals for this year were to increase our participation to, or to, sorry, to surpass fifteen thousand registrations. And to increase our completions and we did both. We had eighteen thousand three hundred and four people who signed up. And seven thousand four hundred and fifty-one who completed the challenge, which was a twenty-seven percent increase over twenty twenty-three enrollment numbers. And a fifty-five in fifty-five percent increase in completions. We also have lots of programs for all ages attended by lots of patrons that Rachel will cover shortly. As part of our fiftieth anniversary celebration, we added adults for the very first time to summer adventure. A change which was met with great enthusiasm by those adults. Their participation had a positive impact on both our registration and completion numbers. Twenty-six percent of all of our registrants were ages nineteen and up, so previously were not able to participate in the program. We focused heavily on encouraging people to participate together, whether as families or as communities. And we heard from patrons that they really did like doing the program together. We added adults because we wanted to get the entire community involved and because research shows that kids need adult reading role models. They actually need to see adults reading in front of them to understand its value. We were able to add adults to the wonderful work of community engagement coordinator Kim Melk, who secured us eighty grand prizes donated from. Community businesses and partners.
Nice.
Yes, these prizes focused on experiences that could be enjoyed by families or by participants of any age. And they were the prize that we were able to offer to adults once entries into the drawing to get those grand prizes. There's lots of excitement about the options, but we did get feedback adults liked some prizes of their own. Continuing offering kids and teens a physical prize, some of the things that we offer, we offer a book as a registration prize. And if they don't like the book, then we have some journal options, like nice bright colors that they can choose from, um we really uh. We offered the book as a registration prize because it promotes literacy, gets books into more kids and teens' homes, um and it gives them an opportunity. It makes it more accessible because they have at least one book that they can read that summer to participate in the program. Uh for completion prizes for our zero to three, they got to choose one of these cute little river themed bath toys uh for ages. Four through eleven, they got a award medal that had a torch design, a celebration of the Olympics, but said reading. This is for you. Uh and then our teens ages twelve to eighteen got to choose another book or journal. And all ages got entered into the grand prize drawings on completion, um adults got it also for registration. And then if they went above and beyond the thirty days required to finish the program, they could earn additional entries into those grand prize drawings. Sorry, switching pages. Every year we use the Public Library Association's project outcome survey, which is which is the standardized evaluation tool for public libraries. We use it to gather feedback from our patrons and then use that feedback to improve our program and to gauge how we're doing. Ninety-one percent of parents and caregivers reported that their child maintained or increased their reading skills by participating in summer adventure. Which is wonderful validation because we specifically designed the program to build a habit of reading over the summer to help combat summer slide. Or when kids and teens um lose some of the skills they gained over the school year because they're not schooled over the summer. Ninety-three percent of children and teens and adults reported that they learned something new. Patrons had lots of positive things to say about summer adventure and the most common feedback for improvement was, could you just please do more? Could you have more prizes? Could you have more programs? Could you do more reading challenges? So it's great to hear how much they love it. Now I'm gonna hand it over to Rachel to talk about programs.
Alrighty, so for our family interest programs, we offered four hundred sixty-one programs attended by eighteen thousand forty-six patrons. In addition to our regular programming, we ha- had performers and three special summer programs, music movement, family dance parties. Parachute play and block parties. We provided art and robotic lessons for one thousand one hundred twenty-five elementary students. At sixteen summer schools and summer camps. Each student registered for summer adventure, received their res- res- registration prize book. And was given their completion medal by their teacher at the end of their summer program. Uh for the end of year summer celebrations, the fountain party was held at Agga Park. George Fellis parked behind the East Library and the Summer Adventure Celebration Concert outside of Palmer Lake Library. And so we have some pictures here of some of the uh programs that we did, so um the big picture there is Cool Science at East Library. And then that's uh first grade class at Grant Elementary is the top right picture. And then the foam party at the East Summer Adventure Party is the bottom picture there. For yoga doll programs, we offer seventy-nine programs attended by eight hun- eight hundred twelve participants. While the number of programs is fewer than what we have provided in the past, our goal was to aim for high quality team programming. Including galaxy spray paint art, escape rooms, murder mysteries, laser tag, fandom trivia. Encoding ses- sessions, all centered around creativity, skill development and socializing. One hundred fifty-six students at Doherty High School signed up for summer adventure and received their registration books. So for this one, the big picture is Families at Cordera with the mobile library service, services solving the escape room. Uh then we also have the High Prairie Library doing the spray paint galaxy at the top right. And then the last one is Shaya Mountain Library when they were doing one of the escape rooms. And then the last one is Shaya Mountain Library when they were doing one of the escape rooms. With uh, adults included in Summer Adventure this year, we offer two hundred engaging programs and several programs for all ages, including Ice Cream Socials, Shakespeare in the Park, an author talk, a book page rethought, Mondrian-inspired art, senior lunch and a movie, the senior chats, Colorful Creations, and the Mobile Earth and Space Observatory. Four thousand one hundred ninety-five patrons participated in our adult programs this year. So the pictures here, the first one all the way to the left, that is Calhoun Library's Colorful Creations Program that was done by their seniors there. Uh, the second one is Two Gentlemen of Verona Performance at Memorial Park in Manitou. And then we have the Mobile Earth and Space Observatory at Ruth Holly Library and the New York Times bestselling author Greg Johnson, uh, author of the Longmire series at Library twenty-one C. That's the last picture there. And uh, just to reiterate, these numbers are all from programs that happened only in June and July, and not the entire year. Um, so we'll end with this quote from a branch staff member, which is uh, warming to our hearts because we're glad it went so very well for them. That is what we strive to do. Um, and looking to the future, we had such a positive um, response to adding adults. We had several branch staff were like, please keep this, please keep this. It was such a great response. Um, but maybe we can look at ways to give them prizes. And we do have, if you guys would like, board members, we do have some extra medals in there.
Well, but thank you guys so much.
It is awesome to see that it is beyond the doors of the library, to see it in classrooms and schools. It's just unbelievable. Thank you very much for your work. Okay, we only have one consent item, and that is to approve the minutes. Uh, is there any discussion or anything about the minutes? Do I need a motion so that we can? Oh, we don't, do we?
Okay.
That's right, thank you. Uh, so that's all we have. Any questions or concerns about the minutes? If not, I believe everybody agrees with them. Okay, now, Jeriah, are you ready?
Ready. Do you want to break it off first or you?
Does anybody need a break?
Now let's stand up and stretch while Jeriah is.
Like now it's break time, now it is.
Okay, I guess we're ready to start. Thank you for that. Just a little push there, Jeriah.
I needed a little stretch myself.
Okay.
Glad you guys got one. Uh, President Gonzalez, members of the board, Jeriah Walker, Executive Director of Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority. Thank you so much for having us out here today. Uh, I do have the developer of this particular project that I'll be talking about, uh, Toby Gannett, who's actually against the wall over there. And then our legal counsel, David Neville, who is the, the architect of all the legal agreements between us and the library script. Um, couple real quick notes I want to make about this project. This is the Bristol Lowell uh, proposed U R A, six parcels, five uh, point seven five acres located east of South Nevada Avenue along both sides of East Los Angeles Street and south of East Fountain Boulevard. So on the southeast edge, uh, really our downtown activity center. Those familiar with this area, you know, the old Lowell School, uh, this project is behind there and then also just directly south of the Police Operations Center over on Nevada. Um, the project is multi-family residential, two phases, a hundred and eighty-five units in each phase, and this is attainable housing project with seventy to a hundred and ten percent A M I. Uh, high level of connectivity, the downtown's multiple network, transit routes, walking distance to parks and trails, walking distance to major employment centers, as well as shopping, dancing, and entertainment options. Um, we feel like this is well-integrated with the Lowell neighborhood. Uh, the site has a strong relationship with the downtown core, uh, numerous overlapping economic typologies, and the housing will support urban livability, uh, attainable housing near employment center, is revitalization of underutilized urban places. Uh, this project uh, unanimously went through the U R A board. Of course, we get a lot of projects presented to me that don't even make it to the board, and some of the projects that are presented to the board that make it to you. Uh, but we are pretty excited about this project. For those that have been on the board for a little bit, this is a little bit of a hybrid from a project that we had already presented to you uh, some time ago, but with the market conditions, et cetera. It actually ended up getting halted after we presented it to the library and got support at that point. Um, President Gonzalez, two, kind of a question for you. We've got two presentations that we can give to. Uh, one is essentially what we gave with an internal, uh, the Internal Affairs Committee meeting, uh, where we go over the financials, obviously, since this document is a disagreement, this financial nature, but you know, pretty germane to, to what we're asking for and how we came up with those numbers. But we also heard Mr. Salt and some comments that, that you made uh, of, of maybe wanting some pictures and some kind of, you know, more, more of a, a project presentation. So we have Toby Gannett here to give that, if you would prefer that version. Or we can do them both and do them really quick. Uh, I wanted to give the board the option, you know, of, of what direction you wanted to go on, since it's your recessions.
I, I do believe that we wanted to see more pictures, uh, and everybody has um, uh, the financials before us. Uh, you could touch on those, uh, but I think we want to see what this is gonna look like.
And, and maybe perhaps in Sarah Dunbar, our consultant, please online, uh, in the upper left corner there, she's a rock star uh, that we brought in for this project. Um, maybe perhaps if financial questions come up, she stays up there and is able to answer them since she did all the consulting work. Uh, and then, of course, you've got the U R A team and the developer here for, for those type of questions. So you want to just proceed with the developer presentation?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sir, I believe you have that one teed up on your computer. Toby, if you want to come up here. Did we have the uh, you would.
Thank you, and, and we're more than happy to dive into the numbers of this project. Um, the numbers are extraordinarily complicated as, as we're trying to deliver a below-market product uh, in the time when inflation and um, interest rates are obviously skyrocketing. Um, little bit about me before I start, my name's Toby Gannett. Uh, I've been in the commercial real estate and development business for twenty-five years. Um, I grew up outside of Boston, uh, learned to read at the first publicly-supported library, tax-supported library in the country. Um, but I really followed my family's roots out here. Uh, one of them did the original mapping for this region for General Palmer. Uh, another one laid the original uh, cornerstone for the Pike's Peak Y O C in the early nineteen hundreds. Uh, so I came out here of great stories of the American West, and I brought my family up here, just so you know, my home libraries are the two Carnegie Libraries and the Eighth Street Library, so I could split between. Um, little bit about my background is I did come out here uh, to go to Colorado College. Uh, did an MBA in Healthcare Administration at U C C S. Uh, then I've done work in artificial intelligence at MIT, uh, cybersecurity at Carnegie Mellon, and Stanford Graduate School of Business and Corporate Innovation. Um, I've taken all of those lessons. Uh, I'm also a fellow at the Aspen Institute and a Board Leadership Fellow at the National Association of Corporate Directors. Uh, in addition to my real estate career, I've done consulting for various companies, uh, Centura Health Systems, C H I, in their portfolio of senior housing, and uh, was the Global Chair of Board and CEO Services for N two Growth and International uh, consulting firm, that's specializing in C E O and board governance. Um, this project um, really came out of my work at the Aspen Institute in housing affordability as cornerstone of American democracy. And my work at Stanford is how do we scale to address the needs uh, that are so profound in our society when it comes to affordable housing. Uh, Colorado Springs is not unique. This is a national pro- problem. Our demographics uh, really mirror the national ge- demographics. Uh, for the first phase of this project, which is pictured here, which is not part of the urban renewal, uh, this is a low-income housing tax credit project that serves the thirty to sixty percent A M I. Uh, to put that into layman's terms, that means uh, rents start at five hundred dollars a month, including utilities, which isn't bad for downtown. The average new rent for a one-bedroom is twenty-six hundred plus utilities for Colorado Springs. Um, so this is the first phase, but we'll dive into it. Um, for those of you who don't know where this project is, it's the intersection of Fountain Boulevard and Nevada is on the left side. Uh, so Phase two is the Lowell Commons, which is right on Nevada. Uh, I'm sorry, Phase three is Lowell Commons, which is right on Nevada. Phase two and one is Draper Commons. Uh, the first one, Summoner House, is that Lytec project I referred to. Uh, we're moving people in now. Um, and then uh, Phase two and Phase three, so the big building on the lower right and the big building on the upper left are the U R A projects. Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with the area, uh, it's, it's where the old railroads uh, intersected. Uh, so this is my stone bridge, uh, which was built in eighteen ninety-seven as part of our railroad system. Uh, we're doing all sorts of interesting projects around the restoration of that bridge as part of this project. A little bit about the background of this project that really started, this is really a project that's for the community and by the community. Uh, for those of you familiar with the Innovations and Aging Collaborative, they were one of the first groups in Colorado Springs to realize that we were gonna have a real shortage of affordable housing uh, for our seniors, and this was over a decade ago. Obviously, COVID and the changes that we've seen have accelerated that. Um, but Innovations and Aging hired the Quad Innovation Partnership, which is U C C S, P P C C, uh, United States Air Force Academy and Colorado College, sorry, Pike's Peak State College. I used to chair that board, so I always call it Community College, so. Um, but uh, they hired the Quad to do several semesters of study uh, in global best practices when it comes to affordable housing. Uh, the first one was site location, uh, proximity to trails, open space, workforce centers, health facilities, which Peak Vista is right there. Um, walkability, all of those and many more. That was the first semester of study. The second semester of study went into financing techniques, third went into construction techniques. Uh, greenbelt technology. Uh, we worked with uh, the um, Independence Center from the very start on this project. One hundred percent of the units will be universal design. Uh, right now in Colorado Springs, this number may be a little bit dated, but over seven hundred people with disabilities needed this type of housing uh, with very, very few uh, available. So we took all of that information that um, Innovations and Aging had, all of these global best practices that the Quad studied over uh, several semesters, and chose this site. Uh, this is the backside of Summoner House, which is the uh, one that's already up and running. Uh, this is a picture of Bristow House, which we're ready to break ground on pending approval. And this is Lowell Commons, which is right on Nevada Avenue, obviously a little bit more of a, a commercial feel as opposed to the other two sites, which are a little bit uh, less dense. Um, one uh, sidelight is as part of that site location. Uh, this was actually our back as up campus. Uh, the original work was done for some land owned by the, this group called the Pike's Peak Library District and Pike's Peak State College downtown. Um, but for various reasons, we had to move locations. Um, we're using a lot of local people in this, uh, Colrelly Construction, uh, Tapas and Associates, T G G Architecture that did all of the original architecture for, for the Lowell neighborhood so that this would fit in. That was also one of the Quad's requirements. Um, typical one, two, and studio units. This is a downtown project, so they tend to be smaller. Uh, if you've been into any of the new apartment buildings in downtown, um, they also are smaller units. Um, one of the recommendations of the Quad was to make the units smaller and to increase the overall common area space uh, for social interaction and to um, increase people's interaction with one another. Uh, another one of the Quad's uh, recommendations was, don't make it just senior, make it intergenerational. So we did that as well. Uh, but so those common area spaces, to give you an idea of the magnitude of them, uh, they're about forty thousand square feet, uh, which represents roughly the size of the United States Olympic Museum. So lots of common area space. Um, most of you can't see this. I can barely see it, but I know it from memory. Um, there is a real problem in Colorado Springs. When I look at the third-party market study, in the immediate primary market area, and the city numbers are bigger, but in the immediate market area, the need for low-income housing was over twelve thousand u- units, and that's Phase one. The need for this second and third phase for the workforce housing component is over eleven thousand units with not one under construction. So we are desperate for this project, this product in Colorado Springs. I wish there were ten more people up here giving this presentation simultaneously. The need is so big. Um, to give you a rough idea, a human idea of what those numbers correspond to, uh, for the low-income housing tax credit portion, the first phase, uh, that would be someone driving a bus for School District eleven or one of the uh, entry-level workers at the Library District. Uh, that would also mean a city worker, the average city worker in Colorado Springs earns just enough to qualify for this. Um, and uh, if you're military, the first phase serves E one through E threes. Um, but anyone who is an E four or above earns too much and needs to be in this workforce housing project. Um, one of the key things that the Quad realizes is that there's a lot of low-income housing developing, be- development happening around the state. But if you're living in that project and you get a pay raise, you get kicked out. And so this is one of the first projects in the state specifically designed to accommodate people as they get promoted through, through their system. So can you imagine being an E two, getting a promotion, getting all excited, and getting kicked out of your home? Here, we have a solution for that, and that's by design. Um, the second and third phase are all serving the ninety percent A M I or below, or below in Colorado Springs. Uh, that's a really important number because it's really, really hard to achieve. Um, you see a lot of these workforce housing projects in the state giving you bans between uh, Seventy and a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty percent. But they're doing a few of the affordable units and a lot of the expensive ones. We have worked really hard with a really complicated and sophisticated capital stack. To push the average AMI down to that below ninety. It's it's what I'm most proud of and it's. No one else really cares, but it's something I've worked for several years to get to. Uh. Not only is it downtown ADA accessible, uh, it's green built. Uh, we're a close to net carbon neutral project by design, once again by the Quad. Um, many of our common area spaces such as a bike repair room, uh, we have um. Uh, community rooms, we have community kitchens, uh, so that people can do a meal together. Um, all designed around the ear uh idea of social interaction. Um, we're also working to extend the downtown arts district to include. Our property and also the adjacent concrete couch or concrete coyote that many of you guys know. Uh, very important partner in this project uh and neighbor. Um, and so we're working to get that whole arts district expanded. So that that would uh enable them to go after more state funding uh for the arts and for the kids that they serve. So we've been working with them since the very inception of this project on. How do we group build a great neighborhood? We're also a lot working with the Lowell and Hillside neighborhood. And Richard Skorman's group on cleaning up Shook's Run, which quite honestly doesn't even. Meet nineteen seventy-two Clean Water Act standards. And as a community, we collect that rot. And we can't do that anymore. We need to revitalize this area while keeping rents affordable and avoiding gentrification. Um, couple key points uh that make this project different. Um, there is a long term use deed restriction to make sure that these rents stay in place. Uh, there is an option by the Colorado Springs Housing Authority to buy phase one. Uh, to keep it affordable, and we will put the same things in place uh for this project in a different way through the URA agreement. Um, so not only will the rents remain affordable, uh, but annually. Uh, there's no margin for error as a developer because these rents will be set and increased by HUD. Um, and other projects that may come before you. If there's um, if there's a cost increase, they pass it on to the tenants. In this case, they're set by HUD and they're set by HUD for the term of this loan. Um. So really, I'm not gonna reread slides, but this is for the long term good of downtown Colorado Springs. We desperately need affordable housing across the spectrum. Um. We are doing it for one hundred percent ADA accessible, universal design for people with disabilities. But also uh, we expect to have a good chunk of seniors in there. Um, but we also anticipate having a lot of civil servants and people who work for the city, county. Library District, we are a large group is uh, school district eleven teachers and staff right now and military. Uh, we're also getting um people from uh local corporations in phase one. Um, from companies like Amazon and UC Health, uh, who cannot afford to to work and live in Colorado Springs. Um, and uh, we would expect to see a bit more of those in in phase two and three, which are more targeted to the workforce. But honestly, they earn a little bit too much, like a hundred dollars too much to live in the low income section. But that's why we're doing the workforce. I would anticipate most of the residents that will move into these three phases already live in downtown Colorado Springs. They simply are being forced out of downtown Colorado Springs and relocating to communities well outside this uh this region. Um, and then once again, uh, close to net carbon neutral, uh, we're hitting it on. All features when it comes to energy efficiency, it would be silver certified by the National Green Belt Council. And uh, we will have an active photovoltaic ray on the roof. But for anyone who knows, energy management, demand side management is where you save the money and. Uh, uh, generation of electricity is where the egos go to play. A little bit more talk about uh this lower area. I mentioned Concrete Coyote there, uh, which is a strong partner in this project. I showed you at the beginning this old stone bridge that we want to restore and rehabilitate. One of the things we're working with the city is to finish the legacy loop. Uh, which was originally laid out by Frederick Olmstead, who did New uh Central Park in New York. Hired by General Palmer and laid the foundation for downtown Colorado Springs. But one that we have yet to realize because of that little railroad that goes through. Um, so we're hoping to use my stone bridge to fill the missing link for the downtown legacy loop. Uh, that's also called the Emerald Necklace by uh Frederick Olmstead. Um. As part of that Emerald Necklace concept, we've also woven in the emeralds themselves into the necklace. So you can think of the legacy loop as the chain of the necklace. And the park system that General Palmer laid out has the emeralds upon that necklace. Um, so Monument Valley Park would be a great example. Uh, the parks right down here. Um. But for this area, it's the Leon Young Park, which has been beautifully restored by the city on the west side of that dotted yellow line. But there's some land owned by the city and myself that has really been one of Colorado Springs' largest homeless camps. And our goal is to clean up that area and put people in housing as opposed to homeless camps. Um, so really hoping to restore this vital link, these parks that will bind the Lowell and the. Uh, Hillside neighborhoods and do so through walkable accessibility. We propose pickleball courts to the city, uh, dog parks to the city and an overall cleanup as part of this project as well. And Richard's itching to go to clean up that crew. Um, some of our community partners, I mentioned that we're working to extend the creative district and arts district into this area. Uh, for those of you don't know, Concrete Couch, there works all over the community, the Big Pumpkin on Nevada. Uh, but we think we can do a whole new level um through this cooperation in total between my land. Concrete Couch and the city's parks, it's roughly forty acres that can be created into a downtown campus for the good of the community. Um, here's just a few of the groups that we've been working with. Uh, from the inception of this project and who have uh written letters of support. Uh, in addition to this, we're working with CHAF, DOLA. Um, several other agencies, we're going through the URA process. And we're also uh currently working with the Colorado Clean Energy Fund on a important piece to this whole puzzle. Um, so a lot of local groups that have been working for a long time. And I, and I hate to say, a lot of people in our community have said we need more affordable housing for a long time. We gotta build it. We can't just complain about doing it. So this has been uh my mission for those several years is this project. And that's it.
Will this uh, um. You know, by the Widener Field where they built those new apartments, there's that section of rentals that were there. Uh, that, because that group did come and talk to the board about. Mill Street, yeah. What have, has any of this presentation or will they be invited to uh? Uh, especially if they've been displaced. Because as the, the market on that area was going up, I didn't foresee landlords keeping that as a rental. I mean, I probably wouldn't. So, but are those people that have been displaced, can they? Be invited to be part, uh, to live in these uh homes or?
Yeah, yeah.
And that will be open in some fashion so people will know?
Absolutely. I mean, this, this will be open to, to anybody, you know, who meets those qualifications. Um, I will say that the um, the Widener project to this day, knowing what phase one just got built, but hasn't displaced. Anybody, because it's just, it's a different product. And so really the people that are living in that Widener project aren't the same that would have been renting in Mill Street. It's just, it's bringing actually new clientele to downtown.
Yeah.
Um, but, but from our data so far, no displacement yet has occurred. Um, I think the biggest. The biggest ultimate threat to Mill Street um will be Drake, really how Drake. And how that area goes. It really won't be Widener's, Widener's a little bit out of its, out of its path.
And another question I have is uh, I can remember when I first came on the board. Uh, we had a different CEO. It was brought up that there are students. That attend Pike's Peak State College that were actually living in their cars. Cause they couldn't find a place they could afford to live that were coming from like Trinidad or. Uh, the western, you know, down in the center area, San Luis Valley, whatever. Is any of this going to be available for them?
It will be, yes. Um, about thirty percent of Pike's Peak State Colleges are housing insecure. According to Dr. Baldwin. Um, so absolutely, that's what this is built for. Um. There are some regulations when it comes, I'm not gonna go into some of the HUD regulations and all that stuff. Um, but absolutely, that's what this was built for. It was built to, for people who are trying to work their way up in our community. It is open to everyone. There are no restrictions, but we are trying to create a community that's open to everyone. And that's really important to me.
Questions?
Can you guarantee me that you are not gonna use a concrete company to do the plumbing work?
We're, we're not used materials like sold on infomercials.
Yeah, that would, that would also be great. Um.
Having been in this business for so long, that was giving me nightmares and flashbacks. Um, I once had to do a uh scope of one of those lines. And then we did a sleeve that went inside of it without digging up the surface. Um, but yes, that was giving me flashbacks, yes.
Uh, Scott, do you have questions or no? Yeah, man. I mean, I, you've been jotting some things down on my concerns or ideas or?
I have some questions.
I, I reserve the right to ask additional questions. All of the documentation from the uh Draper. Um, was it the, the, the last one you guys did in twenty-one in the same area?
Yes.
Um, and I'm comparing the two site plans and I did notice that. Uh, is the, is the.
Do uh, do the seventy to a hundred and ten percent AMI in all of the locations? Or just a specific one? Because when it was presented back in twenty-one, it was. These locations are gonna be the higher incomes, but this is going to be.
Right.
Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, we have to work. So, so that first phase ended up becoming a housing authority project. And going through just total taxes and so that one was the affordable piece. Just the, the, in that, that lower AMI range. Ended up going with the housing authority without that.
Those two that the.
The face. Some, yeah, yeah, go ahead. We're bring, we're bringing it back up.
It's a good question. Um, so when we originally came to you, the concept was to do all of these as low income.
Correct.
And to do this as workforce housing. Our goal was to put the whole thing into URA um at that time. Uh, the intent was always to have served the thirty to sixty percent AMI. And the seventy to one ten percent AMI. What shifted was we had the Ukraine war and timber went through the roof and interest rates went through the roof. And what's called a qualified census tract, it spot was expiring. Um, and so due to that, we had to quickly change. Um, and, and we made it by three days on a project of this size. So that was. So this became the low income project. And these became the workforce housing projects. As opposed to originally, this was low income and this was workforce. So it's really been a massaging of the overall uh site and sequence. Um, this no longer could qualify for low income housing tax credit. Uh, financing because of the expiration, the QCT is determined by HUD.
Okay, so right now, this project that you're coming to us for is for workforce period.
Yeah.
Yeah, the low income's already built.
Right.
Workforce, workforce.
But good catch. Um.
Uh, what AMI did you guys use? I mean, I could go look at it if, man, I, I, that's a pain.
No, we use the El Paso County, uh, El Paso County adjusted median incomes.
For just that area, right?
Uh, it's actually set by the county level. It's not set at sub levels. Um, so it is the overall county level. Um. Honestly, the highest income in the county is generally in the more populated areas. Um, so. You know, there is an alignment there, but it's coincidental more than anything. Uh, goes back to those studies that the Quad Innovation Partnership put together.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had about the number of units, so the original plan was two hundred and eighty units. And the new plan is a hundred and eighty-five units?
That's for phase, phase one. Phase two is another.
Can you pull up that slide again?
It's two phases. So one eighty-five for phase one and then one eighty-five to two hundred and five units for phase two.
But phase one is the one that's been built already.
Phase, phase, uh, this is where it gets confusing. So phase one of the URA project. Hundred and eighty-five units, phase two of the URA project, hundred and eighty-five to two oh five.
Okay.
Phase, uh, one of the housing authority, I have to defer to the developer because I didn't work on that one, but that's, that's a separate project. So this is what almost the three hundred and, was it three hundred and seventy, three hundred and eighty? For this one. For this URA.
So that two eighty number that you're getting originally was this.
Both of them.
Yes, and then.
Okay.
The other one was two hundred up here.
Right.
By the bifurcation, this became ninety-five, this became one eighty-five. This did get uh tax exemption through the housing authority. We had originally anticipated to do it all through URA. But because of the speed, we needed to go through the housing authority, which does include all the number of tax and districts that are associated. It's one board as opposed to this process. Okay.
And I, I don't recall, because like I said, I don't have all the stuff from the last time, but for the Lowell Commons. Were there plans to have businesses on that first floor? Uh, to come in? Is that still a plan or?
Or not. We had looked at that and um, we had anticipated doing that, but the market just did not bear out specifically during COVID. And so we took that space and made it more units.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I probably will have a lot more questions.
This project has layers that go down a mile deep and I'd be perfectly happy. Going through each one of with them with you. It's, it is a complicated project because of its capital stack and it's, it's um. Mandates for affordability and so more than happy to sit down with you, go through all the numbers. Okay.
And uh, everybody has a copy of the project, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they will be back in October and we will, hopefully that's when we can make a decision.
Ho- hopefully so, because we're, we're shooting for council on the twenty-second. The city council, and I think the library meeting was just before that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we cannot go to council without all the entities support.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So looking at the uh, the property tax table that is in the, the report. Um, I wanna make sure, because it's been years since we've had one of these things.
Yeah.
Um, so I wanna make sure that I understand, uh, you know, the three columns you've got there, the six, sixty thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's the base property tax that comes from that location. The library retains that specific amount.
Correct.
It's the five hundred and seventy-six thousand over the twenty-five years. That is allocated to this specific project or that we defer to this project. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, so that, that is, that is perfect.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood that.
Okay. And we have an independent consultant that is Sarah that's somewhere up, oh, she's right in the middle. She can answer anything when it comes to those layers of detail. She is third party, so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I, I still, that was still the case. Since we have, like I said, we haven't done that for a while, so.
And uh, I, I don't wanna speak through the library, uh, the staff or the leadership. But I know that uh, PPLD was. But I know that uh P P L D was uh quite involved with uh creating. Um, tiles, I believe it's what they were. They painted tiles and did different things down in the southeast for Panorama Park, I believe. Is there any possibility for uh P P L D uh children to be involved? Or adults, because I think adults painted some of those as well, uh involved in any of that arts that you're going to have in the park?
Absolutely, uh, you know, um, first of all, we'd love people who work at the library to live there. Um, they're some of the best people there are. And so, uh, it's one of the reasons we built this. And one of the reasons we looked at this downtown as our initial site. Um, and uh, secondly, I think Steve Wood and Concrete Couch have worked for over twenty, almost twenty years. Next week or something like that, um, really spearheading arts and arts education for the community. Um, we've been meeting with B. Vandenberg Foundation to bring additional grants into this area. Um, Copper's been in consultation, Susan Edmondson at the Downtown Partnership. Um, so I believe arts are a vibrant part of the community and I wouldn't be working to extend this arts district. Uh, into the, this whole area. Uh, if I didn't think we could make it a real interesting area. I've talked to parks about making all of Shook's Run, having wayfiring, wayfiring. Uh, marks along Shook's Run that are done in art. Um, one of the great opportunities for the community is that the rail line. The, the spur rail line that goes through my property. Um, will be abandoned by the railroad and I'd love to see it be a linear park through downtown Colorado Springs. Fifty-foot wide arts walk, full ADA accessibility. It could be like the Hyde one. Um.
Yeah.
Would, I will continue to nudge the city and they're continuing. They will continue to try and tolerate me in that regard.
Yeah.
We, we, we also will, um, I'll add to, and Toby's always been a good sport about this, but we work with the school districts. On all of our rural projects, just to offer opportunities for students to come out and just learn about land use, learn about what it takes to. Do these type of properties and cleanup and property management, construction and architecture and all the, all the stuff that goes into this. That's, that's a need that we help serve too.
One of the dreams, one of the dreams, when I looked at this and a lot of my work is in senior housing. Was the idea that a resident living in these apartments could be working with the kids. Working with the kids, uh who are going to Concrete Couch and doing intergenerational programming in the arts. Uh, that's one of the key determinants of the site selection.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns? Well, thank you very.
No, I, I'm good for now.
Okay, uh, that's why, I, 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 you bring up some really good questions that we don't think about.
He does, he does.
I know that there's uh others in the room that do that as well, so I enjoy listening to their out-of-box thinking. Uh, thank you very much and uh next month we'll see what happens.
Having worked with boards, it's your fiduciary duty to ask those questions, so.
Thanks, thanks, Sarah.
Okay, let's see, let me find me a ten back. I think that we are finished. Uh, yes, I am. Uh, before uh we adjourn, I want to invite everyone into the next room, right? The applicants into the next room for our little reception, so we can get to know you better. Uh, from uh the board and some of the staff, okay? Thank you very much. This meeting is a.
Sorry, and, and the security will escort the rest of uh, of the audience members out, so.
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you for that.